So, meeting by beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda numbers three through eight.
Tom Wood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item will be a public hearing and discussion regarding the Thernbeck Preserve easement vacation. And so, Jessica, would you please read as it was written?
City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice, Vacation of Drainage and Utility Easement. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Columbus City Council on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the city hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to review a request for the city council to initiate proceedings by a majority of property owners to vacate the public drainage and utility easements as described below. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Property Owner, Buyback Inc., property location, Thernbeck Preserve, 2nd Edition. Signed, Elizabeth Merzko, zoning administrator, submitted to the Forest Lake Times on August 19th, 2019, and published in the Forest Lake Times on August 22nd and August 29th, 2019.
So, Elizabeth, would you like to start, or should I have Mr. Rude come up?
Jason can come up and start the discussion.
Evening.
Evening.
Like me to give a little summary?
Please.
Okay.
Pull your microphone up closer and speak right into it.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
And tell us who you are, please.
And I'm sorry?
Your name, address.
Okay.
For the record.
Yep, my name is Jason Rude with EG Rudin Sons. Address is 6776 Lake Drive in Lino Lakes.
What?
By chance, do you have the exhibit that we prepared, or I can?
Yes, they do have it.
Okay. I can give some background information. There is an existing drainage and utility easement that is at the southeast corner of Thernbeck 2nd Edition. There it is. That's our guy. This was created in the 90s. It had been recorded on this parcel to cover wetlands, and it was a bit far-reaching in its extents. This easement, where it lies, would get close to a couple of the building sites at the southeast corner, namely lots 4, 5, and 6. The wetlands that it was intended to cover, those easements would be rededicated on the plat, so those wetlands would still be covered by a drainage and utility easement. But from a future building perspective, we don't want to put a house or a pole barn in an easement. And so, this was an item I had brought up at the time of preliminary plat review as well, just so everybody would be aware. We've provided an exhibit that depicts where it is, but then we show the end result, which is on the plat where we'll dedicate the easements.
Are you changing the size of it, or the scope of it, or just replating it on the new?
The easement, kind of the northerly edge of the easement, kind of the gray area. The one on the, if we exclude the top two little blurps and go down to the third one, yeah, kind of on the northerly edge there, that edge gets close to where we have some of our building pads, and the nature of that area is being regraded and changed. The wetland itself is quite a ways south of there, which is kind of shown, and we're redefining the easements to cover the future drainage patterns, too. So, to complicate things, that area is also subject to a wetland management corridor, and we're providing the easement to cover that. So, there's no shortage of easement on our final plat when it's done. If nothing's getting missed, it'll be rededicated. This plat has gone through Rice Creek Watershed Review as well, and as part of their process, they asked for a separate easement that'll be recorded by a separate document that'll cover that area as well, because it's part of their wetland management corridor, so.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. I reviewed it, and what Jason described makes sense. You know, they're just reconfiguring the existing easement to match more into the proposed pond and grading that they're, for the new development.
Anything else to add?
There was an easement that was conveyed to that exception parcel by a separate document. That's not part of our plat. That easement would stay intact.
Yeah. Well, then, if there's nothing else, I'll close this portion of the hearing with the right to reopen it.
Public comment.
Okay. You may step down. And then, if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak on the issue before I close it, and in that case, I will close it with the right to reopen it if we need to. And so, council, anybody have any questions?
No.
Any?
No.
Mr. Counselor?
Nothing further.
Anything that we should be aware of, or?
Nope, we've reviewed this with the applicant, and it is consistent with the final plat which follows. That's why this comes up first, because if you don't approve this, then you can't approve the final plat.
In your additions, on page A1 through A9, that is the resolution that approves the vacation. I'm sorry, through page A7. So, on the first page, you'll see the resolution. Exhibit A is the legal description, which is very lengthy. I think Jason probably broke his pencil on this one. And there's the exhibit in its entirety as the exhibit B.
And it would be Resolution Number 1923.
So, if no one has anything to add, somebody like to make a motion?
So, move to approve Resolution Number 1923, approving vacating of the ponding and flowage easement as legally described in Exhibit A, subject to rededication of the drainage and utility easements in the Thernbeck Preserve 2nd Edition plat.
Is there a second? Both been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion passes. So now, let's move on to number 10. So, we'll need a motion for the Thernbeck Preserve Phase 2 whackup permit, pages 26 through 34 in our packet.
Jason, are you prepared to talk about the whackup, the whackup permit? Are you familiar with the whackup permit for this plat?
The wetland fill?
Yeah.
Yep, I am.
Okay.
Want me to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay. The northerly cul-de-sac that is part of the plat there, there are two wetland impacts. You have an exhibit for that one, too? That kind of looks like it. There we go. Yeah. So, there is an existing driveway access that crosses a ditch that goes to the back property there. There's an outbuilding that I think that that driveway went to, and when we did our layout, we utilized that same alignment. We've kind of centered our road on that area. It's kind of on the upper right, yep. That crosshatched area is where the driveway is. The crosshatch is the impact, and our goal was to avoid wetlands as best as possible. So, that's the route we took, and we do have an impact. And then, there is another impact that would be anticipated for the driveway. You can actually see it on that one. That one still works. On the left side, there's a crosshatch that's there. There's a driveway that would be constructed in the future to get to that home. Those are the two impacts we have. I don't know if I, okay.
This application is before you because this council serves as the LGU and decision body that makes decisions on Wetland Conserva, Wetland Conservation Act issues. In this particular case, you've delegated to staff. We're able to make wetland boundary no loss and exemption decisions, but when it comes to replacement or banking, it comes, the application comes before you. And in this case, this is a replacement plan. The TEP panel has met. They have reviewed the site. They've made their recommendations. On page two, which is, the first page is page 26, and on page 27, you'll see that the notice has conditions. There's one condition, and the condition is as follows. It says the decision is not valid until the credits have been debited by Bowser staff, and no grading can occur until that process has occurred. They have recommended approval to you as the TEP panel. Otherwise, they have no other further comments.
So, when we approve this, nothing can start until they've done their wetland banking? Is that what the condition means?
And they're buying credits.
Until it's registered, or?
Yep. I think he's secured the source where he's going to be buying his credits from.
Yeah.
It says that no grading can occur until the credits have been debited. My assumption is until they have paid for it.
Paid for it, yep.
Has anyone any questions on this?
I have a question. When do you plan to start if things, whatever quits raining? Is this something to do before winter?
I can't really talk on behalf of Tom Carlisle, but I have a good sense of when his goal is. His goal would be to start this month, this year.
For?
Yeah, he would.
So, would someone like to make a motion, then? Number 10.
Motion to approve the wetland replacement plan application for the Thernbeck Preserve 2nd Edition. Plat is subject to the condition that the permit is not valid until the credits have been debited by BWSR staff, and no grading can occur until the process has occurred. They have recommended approval to you as the TEP panel. Otherwise, they have no other further comments.
So, when we approve this, nothing can start until they've done their wetland banking? Is that what the condition means?
And they're buying credits.
Until it's registered, or?
Yep. I think he's secured the source where he's going to be buying his credits from.
Yeah.
It says that no grading can occur until the credits have been debited. My assumption is until they have paid for it.
Paid for it, yep.
Has anyone any questions on this?
I have a question. When do you plan to start if things, whatever quits raining? Is this something to do before winter?
I can't really talk on behalf of Tom Carlisle, but I have a good sense of when his goal is. His goal would be to start this month, this year.
For?
Yeah, he would.
So, would someone like to make a motion, then? Number 10.
Motion to approve the wetland replacement plan application for the Thernbeck Preserve 2nd Edition. Plat is subject to the condition that the permit is not valid until the credits have been debited by BWSR staff, and no grading can occur until the process has occurred. That is second, so it's been moved and seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're on to number 11, which is the Thernbeck Preserve Phase 2 Final Plat, pages 35 to 37, and then a discussion about the name change from Yangtze to DePaul Street Northeast.
The preliminary plat went through Planning Commission, and city staff have reviewed the preliminary plat. There are conditions, and I'm not sure whether everything has been fulfilled. But what you have before you is final plat, and when we looked at the final plat, I don't know how many people asked me how to say this, the road. And I know it's after a river, but I think it's quite a difficult, just, you know, identification for a street. But further, it's further the issue what I discovered is, so, we have a naming scheme here in Columbus on our streets, and it's in alphabetical order. And it's in alphabetical order for a reason, for emergency purposes. So, it goes in succession. So, if you're in a hurry, trying to get somewhere, and you're not writing signs, at least you can see alphabetically the roads go in order. Also, the streets are in numerical order if you're going north or south. So, east to west is alphabetically, and north to south is numerically. And so, you have Furman Street, and then the next street is Zingiu. So, somewhere in here, we got a Y-lettered street, and I felt that maybe it was just too far off the alphabet in order to even in your mind figure that after Furman Street, you're going to get to Y. So, I started looking at the alphabet and what the opportunities were, and there was Elmira, Baylor, Cornell, I think it was Augusta, Anna, and I didn't make up these names. These names are already scheduled, and DePaul was one of them. So, again, the choices are out there. Staff would put forward DePaul, but again, if you like those other names, Baylor was out there, too. So, it was just the letters had to be before the letter F.
So, A, B, C, D, E, and then Furman?
Furman Street, correct. So, it's, you know, going from west to east, you know what I mean, is the alphabet. So, it's Y, and then it's X, Y, Z, A, B, C, D, E, you know what I mean, to F. But it's only a very short distance before you get to Furman Street.
Elizabeth, wasn't it also, we were trying to avoid choosing a name that had already been used elsewhere in the city so that we don't have the situation where, you know, I don't know, Cornell's here, and then it picks up again over here, because for residents, that's a big pain. You get lots of people's mail that isn't yours and things like that. So, if I remember correctly, DePaul had not been used.
DePaul has not been used, and Elmira hasn't been used, but Cornell was. There was a few others that were, Baylor was, yes. So, that's the reason that I'm even bringing it up.
I have no problem with DePaul. Would anyone like to make a motion, or choose a different name?
I'll make a motion to change the street from Yangtze to DePaul Street?
Subject to title review and?
Subject to title review and subdivision agreement to include Furman Street improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, Jason, the spelling is D-E-P-A-U-L.
Okay. And that'll run for the length of that, right?
Yes.
It kind of meanders through there, but the entire thing will be DePaul.
Yeah, and I realize it covers a lot of ground in there.
And there's no houses on there now? It's just being developed? Are there houses on there now?
No, this is the new development.
This is the new part.
Mr. Mayor of Council, just for clarity in the minutes, that also, that motion included the final plat, right? Sounded like we kind of backed into the final plat, so I just wanted to make sure that we got that action covered.
Yes.
Great.
Or should have. Should we repeat it completely, or not?
No, I think as long as the minutes taker has the right motion, that's great.
All right. Anything else for us?
Final plat is going through review at Anoka County. It's been checked. We're almost through that process, so we're well on our way. Thank you to the staff and everybody at the city for all your help. I know this project has a lot of moving parts and are grateful for your help, so thank you. So, appreciate it.
Maybe the council would be interested, there's quite a few reservations already, lot reservations, right?
What's that?
Lot reservation, at least interest. I don't know if they can take reservations without lots.
We've heard that there's a lot of interest in this phase.
Oh, I've heard that from Tom, that there have been a lot of, there has been a lot of interest. We had staked some temporary lot corners out there for viewing. He's had people out on the property. I don't know what commitments he has, but absolutely, he's had a lot of interest in the property, so. And I do know his goal is to, the weather will agree, hopefully, move some dirt here this year, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is our Planning Commission report, and this is the information on the Northeast 35 High Density Mixed Use Design Standards.
Barb Bobic, 8414 140th Avenue.
Barb, pull the mic in before you start.
Pardon me?
Get it closer to you, so you can hear you better. Please.
The Planning Commission meeting was a continuum of a two-and-a-half-hour workshop for the city council early in the afternoon discussing the Northeast Quad and design standards for mixed-use high-density residential zoning district. Dean Johnson presented a global view of the design standards, and he explained that he gleaned a lot of the information from previous council and commission workshops and meetings to gain an insight, excuse me, to develop those standards since the, there's currently no ordinance in the municipal code for the new zoning district. He explained that the 2040 Comp Plan adoption is scheduled for October 23rd, 2019, and will need to be published. This provides about a 60-day window to develop the standards in the zoning draft. The starting point for the process involves four basic exterior building aesthetic components. The first one is the architectural features, the, for example, roof-type balcony siding staggered facades. The next one would be primary external building materials such as stone, brick, wood panels, glass, metal, and vinyl trim, and the desired percentage of each. The Planning Commission had already talked about the masonry standards, 25 to 40%, masonry, and it's agreed that there's about 20 to 25% will be used for glass, windows, metal, and/or vinyl trim. And the rest was to be LP panels or lap siding. The next thing would be the building colors, and then the final would be the basic design standards, and that would be the combination and variety of the various, previous three components, such as vertical, horizontal siding, staggered facades. In addition to that, a description of the durability and warranties of these exterior products. He also mentioned that further on in the development, there will be a discussion about the maintenance and repair components of these materials to put them in the CUP. The council and the commission previously agreed on the importance of a cohesive and compatible design and color scheme throughout the Northeast Quad mixed-use development. Mr. Johnson explained that the color scheme and the site lighting standards are already in place due to the Hy-Vee site plan. Tom Palmquist from the Columbus 3597 JAM Group and Mark Kronbeck from Alliant Engineering were available to answer questions. Mark provided a new design plan showing some exterior material variations using lap siding in horizontal and vertical combinations. The first-floor parking garage will provide 20% of the desired 25 to 40% masonry component. Mark explained that by shifting the remaining masonry to the south and west sides will not increase the project cost. With the shifting and the combination of the vertical and horizontal siding, he felt that the appearance would have more pizzazz. The original apartment layout that he had been given had 21 studio apartments, 71 one-bedrooms, and 22-bedroom units. The newer layout that he provided was a combination of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, which should increase the income from that complex. The current plans for parking allow 1.8 stalls per unit, 90 lower-level garage stalls and 100 outside stalls at 9 feet by 20 feet. Both Elizabeth and Dean have concerns as to whether that number will be enough for 120-unit building and whether the stalls will be large enough to accommodate pickups and SUVs. Mr. Johnson recommended double striping on the stalls to make it easier to park. He also said that many of these concerns can be studied further in the development, and he would write recommendations with teeth to address them. He said the immediate task is the design standards, and with the current information provided, he will write a draft for the ordinance in legally-based language to set design standards for the mixed-use high-density residential zoning district. He indicated that he would use the Hy-Vee site plan to draft a zoning ordinance amendment. In other business, Ben provided an updated map of existing billboards. The amended Chapter 7, Article 2 Columbus Code of Ordinances will change the 20-year IUP to a 10-year IUP. Billboard IUPs will terminate upon any use other than a single-family resident or agriculture use on the property. This will, this change will apply to four residential properties and six vacant properties. 14 billboards are currently on wetland that can't be developed, so the change will not apply to the. 100 outside stalls at 9 feet by 20 feet. Both Elizabeth and Dean have concerns as to whether that number will be enough for 120-unit building and whether the stalls will be large enough to accommodate pickups and SUVs. Mr. Johnson recommended double striping on the stalls to make it easier to park. He also said that many of these concerns can be studied further in the development, and he would write recommendations with teeth to address them. He said the immediate task is the design standards, and with the current information provided, he will write a draft for the ordinance in legally-based language to set design standards for the mixed-use high-density residential zoning district. He indicated that he would use the Hy-Vee site plan to draft a zoning ordinance amendment. In other business, Ben provided an updated map of existing billboards. The amended Chapter 7, Article 2 Columbus Code of Ordinances will change the 20-year IUP to a 10-year IUP. Billboard IUPs will terminate upon any use other than a single-family resident or agriculture use on the property. This will, this change will apply to four residential properties and six vacant properties. 14 billboards are currently on wetland that can't be developed, so the change will not apply to those IUPs. Any questions?
Yes, I have. Would you, do you know the number of how many studios, how many one, two, or three bedrooms?
I didn't write that information down, so. I did leave the form on the table, so maybe Elizabeth has it.
I'd have to look it up. I don't know the breakdown, but I do have it.
But the point was that he increased his two and three bedrooms?
It should increase the income then for the property, whereas with the one-bedrooms, of course, you know, you're limited, and studios. So that may have been the reason that they changed the design.
I think the earlier version didn't have any three bedrooms, is that correct?
No.
Yeah.
All one-bedrooms and studios, and the two-bedrooms, just 20 of them for 112 units, which was not a lot. But the parking problem will be more serious with the larger apartments.
But Dean was going to work on increasing the size of the parking lot?
I think we heard, Mr. Mayor and Council, from the developers' representative that they would also be bringing in data from other sites to demonstrate demand. So I think that in addition to looking for additional spots, there's also a kind of a prove-it-type statement and show us the data from other locales.
And when will they have that?
I think with their application materials.
Yeah, right now, the application is incomplete because there are several items that they need to submit, so right now, we're waiting for more submittals from the applicant. But it looks like here, there's 10 units, 10 three-bedroom units and 38 two-bedroom And this also says that there's another category, it says one bedroom plus den, so that just means it's a smaller room than a bedroom usually? Is that how that works?
Sometimes that means they don't have a dedicated closet for that room.
Oh, okay.
Or a den.
Any other questions or discussion?
No.
Thank you. So our next item will be the public open forum. Anyone here who would like to speak at public open forum? If not, we will go to our engineer report.
Good evening. In your additions, pages A8 through A11 is a motion or a resolution for posting Joe Drell Street as a rural residential designation to change the speed limit to 35 miles per hour, and that's based on the fact that there's access less than every 300 feet on average. So it meets those criteria based on information that staff had put together, and is at this time looking for your motion to approve that resolution.
Would like to make the motion.
There's a map in there as well as which streets it's, Joe Drell, 137th and Nebula.
Do you have a number?
Yeah, 1924.
1924.
I make a motion to approve the resolution number 1924, approving the rural residential district designation for a 35 speed limit for Joe Drell, 137th Joe Drell, and Nebula as depicted in Exhibit A.
Which is on your A10. In your additions, the map is on A10.
Second. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then the motion or the resolution passes, the motion passes.
The next item was this information regarding some feedback from the county on Kettle River Boulevard. Two items, one was the curve south of Broadway. Let's start with that one. And the feedback so far is that the, there's two different departments that'll look at it from the county. One is traffic. They're looking at signage and striping and that, those type of elements, and from that perspective, it meets all the requirements. It actually goes above and beyond what's required in the Minnesota traffic control manuals. However, then, engineering is still looking at it from a geometric standpoint, curve, radius, and speed, and so we're waiting to hear back on that.
Yeah.
The other item is the intersection of Kettle River Boulevard with Camp 3 Road, and there's quite a bit of information in your packet, which was actually whittled down from what we received, but there's, a lot of it was history. This was analyzed back in 2015, and they had come up with some long-term possible solutions of actually changing the intersection entirely. But before getting to that, what they found was, I think there was a request or recommendation for a blind intersection sign. That particular sign is not an appropriate sign for the manual and uniform traffic control devices. What the county says they would consider is on Kettle River Boulevard, placing watch-for-turning vehicles signage as you approach Camp 3, and on Camp 3, cross-traffic-do-not-stop signage as you approach Kettle River. So as you're coming up to the stop signs, there'd also be a sign that says cross-traffic-do-not-stop. That's one solution, part of a solution. They also said that since 2015, site distance criteria has changed, so they would suggest reevaluating the intersection to see if they need to do more clearing or more, if other, if the angle, you know, is sufficient or not. So those are two, call them, you know, stop-gap things they could do. Part of the backup information shows some of the sketches they came up with four years ago for cul-de-sac, cul-de-sacking the cut-through section of Camp 3, you know, making everyone go down to the other intersection, or reconfiguring Kettle River altogether and having it join Lake Drive at Camp 3 and closing off the current intersection of Kettle River and at Lake. So, you know, this has been through a number of analyses in the past, and they're willing to look at it again. In the short term, they could do that signage and reevaluate the site distance criteria.
So when I come to the city hall, I come off of Lake Drive, and then I do Camp 3 and take a right. They did do a lot of tree clearing.
Yep.
However, if they would take like about 10 more feet on the north side, you know, another 10 feet back from the, where it's cleared, you would see farther. So will they pick that up, or do we tell somebody, or?
Yeah, I can respond to their email about those, I'll say, interim solutions and including getting that northeast corner cleared more.
Cleared back farther, and I think I've noticed that even if you cleared back 10 feet more from the road, you're not going to get the whole line of trees out of there, so the landowners won't be, have everything completely scrubbed out.
Right.
And I think that would make it a little easier or farther site pattern.
Right. To the right-of-way line.
What those trees are right there.
On their property.
Private.
So then what happens?
That's where they stop.
That's where they stop, but then if they analyze the new site distance criteria and said that those, that's an impedance, then maybe they could acquire some of that or do something to make that more visible. They're talking, they also said that, you know, if this configuration remains the way it is for the long term, not closing any of these roads, you know, there's other considerations that are bigger, like a roundabout or northbound and southbound turn lanes. So they'd look at all of that as well, but they're saying from a transportation standpoint, it's probably better to consider one of the realignment options than put in a roundabout or turn lanes on Kettle River. And a couple of the drawings that are near attachment of the aerial maps with some just hand-drawn changes are, yeah, Elizabeth has one up there now. It's a little bit hard to see, but, so this was one, one option where they would cul-de-sac right here. Or actually, they'd close this section of Camp 3, and then this would be the full intersection, and they'd also close that cut-through right there and cul-de-sac that off, because that's, that's kind of a dangerous intersection right now with that three-way, the way they come together. And then the next drawing, I think, Elizabeth, there was one where they were realigning Kettle River completely, making the intersection with Lake over here and just closing this one off completely, and then cul-de-sacking the, or getting rid of the cut-through and making a T-intersection up here. These are just some ideas they came up with three or four years ago that they would consider looking at again. So I guess my, it's information, and also the, if you're good with it, I'll respond yes to the interim measures and look at the site distance again.
All right.
So you're going to ask them to take a look at both of those intersections, because I heard you say about Camp 3, but I didn't hear the 155th. You're going to talk to them about that, too?
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they've, they're aware of it, that this is part of their drawings from back then, so.
Okay, but the thing is, is I notice they say, no, there's no accidents and that sort of thing, but the problem is that the traffic there has increased measurably in this summer, and I don't know if it's because of having to reroute everything, but it's scary down there.
Hopefully, it decreases next year when 35 is done, but that's part of the whole area that they're looking at. So I'll get back to them in that regard. And the last item is just an update on projects, and the most significant update is earlier this afternoon, we had a pre-construction meeting for Hornsby Street realignment, and the contractors wanting and ready to go. Forest Lake Contracting was the low bidder that the county let the project, and they're actually going to be starting on Monday. So you'll see activity starting out there. And this fall, they hope to get the north leg, the north realignment of Hornsby done, as well as the, there's a westbound right turn lane that'll be installed on 97 to New Hornsby. So that's part of it as well. They try to get done this, this fall. And if you've been out there lately, it's, it's a war zone with the, with the design-build project, but they're making quite a bit of progress, and so they have all the traffic on the south side of 97 right now, so that's, that's actually good for what our contractor wants to start on the north side of 97 and just keep that in place and then work north up Hornsby. And then in the spring, the remaining work on 97, on the south side of 97 eastbound, and the traffic signal installation would take place.
Anything else?
That's it for this evening.
Number 15, attorney report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, in your additions on A12, you have a very short ordinance which extends the no-hall routes. We have two no-hall routes today on Howard Lake Drive and Zurich Street, and the council was interested in extending that to Notre Dame from West Broadway Avenue to 181st Street Northeast, and also 181st, or Avenue, I should say, Northeast, from West Broadway to Kettle River. So that ordinance is in front of you, and for your consideration, it would be ordinance?
1904.
1904.
Can you repeat the streets? I thought they wanted some more included than that. I thought Bender was one of them, and I thought.
Notre Dame from West Broadway to 181st, and 181st from West Broadway to Kettle River. What we had is?
They're through roads, you know what I mean, so that's where the no-hall route is through, for the three roads.
Okay. Like to make a motion? Is it a motion or is that?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance, the, just make a no-hall route for 181st, 1904.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's an ordinance.
Now we're onto number 16, mayor and city council members report. Penny?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing, except Fall Fest is Saturday. Everybody should come.
And the weather's supposed to be good.
I hope so.
Jeff? We had a cable commission meeting this afternoon. A couple of things we talked about, LTV is looking for filmmakers. If anybody's interested in that, they're having trouble finding filmmakers to film these meetings and et cetera, sports. They'll train you for that, no experience necessary. And the FCC made a new ruling that's going to affect the cable commission. Starting September 30th, they're gonna, they're going to start charging for things they give away free right now. So cable drops and stuff are in government buildings, and they made it so the cable commission or cable company can start charging for those, and there's other things also. So we haven't had a budget yet because we don't know where it's going to end. They said they'd give us the information by the end of the month, so we don't have the budget numbers yet. And also, they set up a studio, a filming studio at the high school, which is going real good, and they did the mock car crash. I guess that's been going on for a couple of weeks. We're getting pretty involved with that, and that's just about finished up. And I guess that's all I have.
Shall I, anything from you?
Just reiterate that the Fall Fest is a-coming.
And I have nothing in particular, except a reminder that today is anniversary, 18th anniversary of 911. So those years flew by in a hurry. And so now, we're going to have a closed meeting, so we're going to clear the chambers.
I think we have two items before that.
Oop.
Under the administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Elizabeth?
I have two things just for information. The first one is, I think we've, I've talked about the Met Council reviewing our comprehensive plan, and we have been given dates. The first date that comes up for the community development committee is on October 7th, and then the following day, the environmental committee will review our comp plan, and then it will go to the Met Council, but when it goes to Met Council, it will simply be put on a consent agenda. And my question to the council is, I've talked to the mayor, and he and I will attend, and my question is, do other council members want to attend, and if you do, I will, you know, post the meeting, that there'll be a quorum if you think that you would like to go to that.
And I would like to ask anyone who's available that day to come and join us. I think if they see us, three or four or five of us, instead of just one or two sitting there.
So the seventh is the community development committee, and that's where it's more about the zoning and those chapters. The following day is the environmental portion in front of the environmental committee, and I've asked our city engineer to attend that because that's about sewer and water.
And the full, I think the one that the mayor wanted folks at is the full council? Is that what you're thinking, or?
As many as are available, just so that.
You wanted us at the seventh, right, not the full?
Seventh.
At the first one.
Oh.
Monday. Yeah.
Will Dean be there with us?
Dean will also be there at the seventh.
So we could potentially have one, two, five, six, seven, eight people, and if we're, if they see us there and are able to talk to us a little bit, I think the face time is good. So if you're able, talk to Elizabeth. We can carpool it.
It's in St. Paul, is it?
It is in St. Paul, yes.
Do you know what time it is?
I believe it's at 4 o'clock, but I'll double-check the time.
It's about three weeks away then only.
Yeah, only three weeks away. No, it's not. Time's going quick. October is around the corner. The second item is, in your additions, there's a letter from Ham Lake, and when we were going, early on in the budget process, when Sunrise was doing their budget, there was an indication that Ham Lake was not pleased with the way the administrative costs were being allocated. They felt that the administrative costs should not be allocated 25% amongst all four of the communities that are. the communities that are, are partners in the Joint Powers Agreement for Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization. And they did send us a letter indicating that they were not pleased with that allocation and wanted it to be an allocation more about how much percentage of the district was in each community, and Ham Lake is a very small percentage. Well, with that, at the time, they didn't want to ratify or approve the 2020 budget, but have since then approved the 2020 budget with the idea that we were going to have a meeting and we would talk about this allocation and whether or not they would opt out, and I won't say opt out, but they really want concrete to include or have a boundary adjustment to include them because it's a very small area that's in Ham Lake. And while I share their frustration, I know what it's like. Our community is in three watershed districts, and it is hard to keep track of all the rule changes and such and send residents to different places when they're trying to get permits. So I understand what it's like to have more than one watershed district. So in the letter, it is requesting attendance at the, at an October 1st meeting to discuss this, and my question to the council is, who would you like to attend this meeting?
Well, I mean, I think Shelley and I were planning to attend because we're representatives on the Sunrise WMO, but I think they would like as many representatives from the city as they could have, because they're going to talk about changing that joint powers agreement, and that has to be a unanimous, agreed-upon change by all the cities that are participating in it. So I think the more people are there, the better, to hear what they're, they've got up their sleeve.
It's the same time as the budget meeting, right?
This is on, I believe, on October 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And our, and our budget meeting is next Tuesday? This is 17th of September?
So we're not on October 1st for the budget? I don't know why I wrote that down, that's why I'm asking.
October 1st is Tuesday, that's, our preliminary levy is due September 30th, so we wouldn't have a budget meeting that night.
I mean, I know I'll, I'll be there, so.
And where's the meeting at?
Ham Lake City Hall.
I'll post the meeting if we think we're going to have a quorum. That's all I have.
You're going to?
I'll go.
Were you going to say something?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something.
Sounds like you will have a quorum.
Anything else, Elizabeth?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, now we're back to number 20, which is a closed-meeting discussion of the Northeast Quad land. So we'll ask everyone to please let us close meeting. Of course.
I'm good. No worries.
Lee?